Good evening, it is 7:02 and I'll call to adjournments on council meeting.
Certainly. Councilman Schoon.
Present.
Councilman Gardner.
Present.
Present.
Councilman Kulturitis.
Present.
Council President Mellon.
Present.
We have four councilmen in attendance in the room and one councilman virtual.
Thank you, Wendy. At this time I'll ask everyone to please rise for a moment of silence followed by the fudge of applause.
The flag of the United States of America and to the Republic.
Forty Fifth Street Construction Update.
Yes, this is Lee Randall, can you hear me?
I can, Lee.
Yes.
Okay, great. Okay, I'll start with the update on Forty Fifth Street between Calumet and Southwood, the underpass. Retaining wall construction continues, is an ongoing. Also continue to form shore and reinforce the underpass walls, both east, west, and center, as well as the top slab. The Pedestrian Bridge Foundation at Wall One has been formed and poured. The Pedestrian Bridge Foundation at Wall Two would be expected later this week. As far as construction of that, some reinforcing steel is expected Wednesday. The anti-graffiti coating has been applied to the mock-up panels, so working with the contractor to complete the submittal. And then I'll also forward pictures for approval of that. Acceleration of the underpass at Forty Fifth continue. We are about nineteen weeks in, estimated around just over one hundred thousand. Calumet Avenue, continue construction of the southbound lanes. There is one lane each direction on Calumet Avenue. There is a southbound lane, a southbound right turn lane at Forty Fifth, northbound lane, and a northbound left turn.
Yep.
At Forty Fifth. Forty Fifth Street west of Calumet, there is one lane each direction that is currently within the eastbound lanes. Last week we switched traffic after completing that southwest corner, so now traffic is running in those eastbound lanes. Existing asphalt, concrete removals have been completed, mostly completed along Calumet Avenue on the southbound side. The underground storm sewer installation is ongoing. That has been completed south of Forty Fifth Street as well as north of CN. Subgrade treatment is ongoing this week on south of Forty Fifth Street there between Superior and Forty Fifth. Sodding and seeding has been completed along the east side of Calumet and also on the south side of Forty Fifth Street west of Calumet. So watering of that sod has been taking place every day for the first week and then it's, it reduces one day each week as we progress for one month's time. So at this time, if there are any questions, I'll be happy to take those.
Councilors, do you have any questions from this from Randall?
Comment that I'm pleased that everything's going as well as it has.
Yes, thank you.
It's exciting. People don't believe it when I say, yeah, we're going to be done this year, they're like, that can't be, because it's so hard to see it, but. One more call for any questions and we'll move on. I can't see Steve's face, so Steve, you're good?
Oh, I'm good, thank you. It sounds like we're on track per the original plan, so it's, it is looking exciting. No comments.
Great, thank you. Thank you, Lee. All right, that will take us to our public comments section. Is there anyone in the public that wishes to address counsel this evening? Just come over to the podium and state your name and address, please.
Act 1833 to the plane. Question about the new contract for the school crossing cards. Now, I don't, if Munster goes, the school town decides to go to virtual learning for a period of time, totally. Does that have any impact on this contract? As far as what you're paying?
Yes, and Dustin, do you? Be just briefly to it, that like last year we weren't charged for, yeah, we went home, so.
We're charged.
We're only charged for the hours that they actually worked.
Charged on a monthly basis based on hours worked.
Okay, I was just curious about that.
Good question.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, I'm Dave, Dave's Tree Service. I was looking on the computer today and got some paperwork indicating I was the lowest bid for the tree work, but I see they're recommending invoice, give the contract to Pro Tree Service. And as I read it, they're saying about numerous complaints. Myself, I'm the owner, I had no complaints. The only complaint we had was in regards to terming bills. When we first got the contract last year, I was told the whole, the bills, the list was complete. And the list never got complete, so in December, I turned in the bills and they seemed to have a problem with that. So if they're referring to complaints, that's the only complaint I ever had with the work we had done. So I cannot understand a paper word would have any effect on the quality of work we do for the town. I just wanted to bring that to all of your attention before you guys make a decision.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Excuse me. Well, can you go back to the microphone and just for the record, your address?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Your last, your last name and your address.
Dave Johnson. My address is fifteen fifty-five Park West Circle in Munster, Indiana.
Perfect, thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else wishing to speak tonight? Yeah.
My name is Cheryl Beck. I live at eighty-eight oh-one Crestwood in the Hill and Vale subdivision. And my concern is the problems with the sewer drainage, street, the storm sewers in my area. If you're familiar with Hill and Vale, there's four east-west streets and two north-south streets. And I live on Crestwood, which my backyard buds up to Hart Ditch. My garage is at basement level, so there's a ramp. We've lived there for twenty-nine years and we've had numerous problems with incredible amounts of water coming down our driveway.
Can you change the position of the microphone so we can hear?
It's hard to hear.
Yes.
Oh, it's a lot better.
Yes, so we've had problems over the years and talked to the town over the years and didn't get them to go. So we started, we did a lot of things. We created some streams or landscaping which bottled the water down our driveway through these screens and out to the ditch. But over the years, the weather's become more severe. The trees and branches are blocking the sewer a lot and we get, where our house is at the T between Lambert and Crestwood, we get the water from north and south Crestwood and all four of those other streets. And it comes down our garage, down our driveway into our garage. In September, it came into our house for thirty thousand dollars worth of damage. At that time, I talked with Anton and he said, nothing could be done. It was a poor plan to begin with. And then I should make the pump at the end of my driveway to pump it out to the ditch. So I want to know how we can partner, who I should talk to to get this problem resolved. We've spent thousands. And I'm pushing seventy here, I'd like to downsize some, I'm not going to be able to sell my house. The drains, I'm meticulous about walking around the neighborhood and clearing them all the time. They easily get clogged, even if I'm out in the storm removing all the branches and leaves, the water still doesn't go down. So I wonder what I can do or who I can talk to to get some action.
Dustin, do we have any information about that particular location right now? Because I know we've looked at different areas with drains, so do we have anything?
Off the top of my head, I'd be hard pressed to give you some kind of concrete information as we sit here. I'd be happy to sit with you for as long as we'd like to get a full sense of this. In many cases, there are ways that we can partner to mitigate private property flooding. And in those cases, we've been successful so far. I can't say without knowing the details of where you're at, if that's a possibility. Sure, things have changed since last September, so hopefully there's a solution in there. I can, if you'd like to follow up with my office, I'd be happy to spend as much time as you'd like on that.
I would love to.
Okay.
How do I?
Can I catch you after the meeting? Would you be willing to stay and then I can just give you all my contact information?
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak tonight? And Dustin, on, do we have any?
I did not receive any emails.
Okay, and no one, councilors did, because sometimes we've been, you know, contacted also, so I haven't received anything for tonight's meeting. Okay.
I received a phone call today, and although it was a phone call to me, I don't know if it's appropriate to mention here or not, but it was in regards to Dave's Tree Service from a former employee who complimented the company for the work that it had done over the many last twenty-eight years, I think he said, and was bothered that they didn't have recommended, that they weren't the recommended.
I think when, when we bring, when we get to that item of business, then we can, we can talk more about that if you guys need to incorporate it, please, for it.
Sounds good.
Thank you. At this time, we will close the open to the public section of meeting and move to the consent agenda.
I would move that we waive the rules and suspend the readings for the consent agenda and pass this on first reading.
You have a motion and a second. But treasurer, Miss, can you please call the vote?
Yes. Councilor Schoon.
Yes.
Councilor Gardner.
Yes.
Councilor Tulowitzki.
Yes.
Councilor Kulturitis.
Yes.
Council President Mellon.
Yes.
Yes, we have five to zero to accept the consent agenda as presented.
Thank you. Now we'll move to old business, which we have none, I see, and so takes us to new business ordinance eighteen oh-four, amendment number two, to the twenty-twenty salary ordinance.
This says a note on programming, the memo and the ordinance are accurate insofar as it's amendment number three. The title on the agenda unfortunately is inaccurate, so just, it is, I'm sorry. So we do propose amending the salary ordinance to create an additional position. It will not be an additional body. The person in question will be reclassified. The position in question would be a maintainer four. We have five maintainer fours in the organization already, so this is not something new to the organization. Those five current maintainer fours are in the Public Works Department. There is not a maintainer four position in the Parks Department and circumstances within the organization have evolved to the point where it would be appropriate to have one. And I'm asking the council to amend the salary ordinance to allow that to happen. Ordinance eighteen oh-four, so. That's just.
Oh, that we suspend the rule where the readings in that ordinance eighteen oh-four first reading is presented for authorization.
There might have been. To that.
It's not, it's not temporary, though. It should be authorizing five members in the Public Works Department and one for mayor.
In Parks and Recreation. No, it'd be a maintainer four.
Maintainer four position, yeah, the recommended action is important.
All right, so how would you like us to word it if that's incorrect?
To amend the twenty-twenty salary ordinance to authorize six maintainer four positions, five of which remain in Public Works and one additional in Parks and Recreation effective upon adoption of ordinance eighteen oh-four.
How did I know that was coming in? All right.
I'll second, I'll second that motion.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion or questions regarding this ordinance?
This, this person would move from a maintainer three to a four?
So the person in question was hired as a maintainer three and is, and temporarily served as the interim superintendent for maintenance at Centennial. Parks and Recreation long had two superintendents, one for Centennial and one for all the other park facilities. Both those people left the organization different ways. Their positions were consolidated. Upon consolidation, there was a feeling out period of who gets to keep what and what makes sense, and that period is now done. So there's one superintendent, but that person who was temporarily serving as the superintendent from maintainer three kept a number of responsibilities above and beyond what a normal maintainer three within the organization would keep. So to make that person right and do the right thing for the organization, I am suggesting to create a position of maintainer four in Parks and Recreation. That maintainer four position exists in Public Works and those employees in Public Works that are maintainer fours utilize the same amount of discretion and judgment as this person would in the Parks Department.
And Dustin, do I understand correctly, the super, the supervisors or superintendents of the two parks before, those were both maintainer three positions and they've been consolidated now into a?
That, so, that's unfortunately not an accurate understanding. So there is a, I'm going to talk to you, Steve, directly because you can see me. Superintendent here. In Public Works is a maintainer four here.
Okay.
And Public Works in Parks is a maintainer three here. Now, when these left, this maintainer three went up to here. Some of his job responsibilities got taken away, but he's still here, so he needs to be a maintainer four.
Okay, and the superintendent positions, those are still open or?
What, what, they have been consolidated into a single superintendent position.
Okay, so if I, the previous condition was two superintendents and this person has a maintainer three, the current condition, newly proposed condition is one superintendent and one maintainer four.
That is accurate.
Okay, I understand it now, thank you.
Currently, this maintainer three is at a superintendent's interim base rate though, correct?
He is being appropriately compensated by our current policies.
Okay, so this, this possible additional position or increase in position from maintainer three to maintainer four may in fact be a decrease in overall salary?
It will be a decrease in salary to what he's making, but it will be the appropriate salary based on the responsibilities that he has now.
Understandable. And do we have to do anything about the, eliminating the maintainer three position in the public department or that can just go unoccupied?
It can go unoccupied or you can eliminate. I would suggest keeping it in case circumstances dictate that it would be useful to have it then. Or we can look at the salary ordinance and the number of positions allocated during budget time, whatever your preferences.
Is there any additional job description that needs to be prepared for this maintainer four position due to being in the Park Department compared to the Public Works Department?
Not really, I mean, no, I mean, you might change the heading on the job description.
Okay.
Well, that's, that's not completely accurate. I hate to snatch the few from the jaws of victory, but some of the specific responsibilities that this person is responsible for, like the Jerabacher generator, the natural gas, the venting of the methane and things like that, that is unique to Centennial and it's also highly complex.
I guess I'll only bring that up so we can incorporate this all in this change of position description, so we don't have another change in the future something. So if we can incorporate it all into the maintainer four position, that'd be great from a Parks and Recreation standpoint.
Yeah.
Any other questions or comments? We have motion and second. See, I can't see.
No, no other questions for me, thank you.
Okay, thank you. But treasurer, Miss, can you please call the vote?
I can. The motion was made by Councilor Kulturitis, it was seconded by Councilor Gardner, Councilor Schoon, have you got?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Gardner.
Yes.
Councilor Tulowitzki.
Yes.
Councilor Kulturitis.
Yes.
Council President Mellon.
Yes.
Since we have five zero, it passes for the first read.
Thank you. That brings us to ordinance eighteen oh-five, authorized refinancing of outstanding twenty-twenty, twenty-ten EDC bonds.
Yes, so this is not the first time that you have seen this topic before you had a council meeting. The last time you saw it was in April where you authorized town staff to work with bond council and placement agents. They have been working throughout the calamity on what a potential placement or refinancing offered publicly would look like. As we have gone down that road and let the experts work, what we've found is that there has not been a TIF offering in the state of Indiana since March. So the idea that we would have a public refinancing of this debt gives a lot of people pause because there's nothing to be concerned about from a fiscal standpoint. The fundamentals of how we fund that TIF, you know, vacancy rates, stability, all that's good, but if you're the S and P and you're looking at a refinancing and it's going to be the first refinancing in a state, you know, I don't want to be made an example of, quite frankly. So that might affect the total refinanced amount. The alternative to a public offering of this debt is a private place with a bank or financial institution. There are a number that are interested in this. The downside to that is that potentially you would receive less of a refinancing. So instead of, you know, a floor of two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand savings, you might look at a floor of two-hundred-and-forty-thousand savings. Now, is that ten thousand dollars worth it? I think so because, you know, there are a number of things on our horizon where we are potentially going to go to the market beyond the continuing disclosure that we have going on right now. So a rating that may not be based in any other fact than the wish to make an example out of a community and set a tone could have adverse effects on us for months and months or years and years. And I don't think that ten thousand dollars is a risk worth that. Let someone else be first to the door on this one. But even if we look at a two-hundred-and-forty-thousand-dollar refinancing, that's, that's net fees. That is two-hundred-and-forty-thousand dollars of debt service that residents in the civil town of Munster doesn't have to pay. A nine percent savings on that bond issuance, that's real money. That's nothing to feel bad about. So I feel very comfortable about where we're at. And what this ordinance does is it gives you, it gives the town the legal authority to refinance this. Previous approval said, go ahead and work with the pros, but we can't do anything without the path of this ordinance. There's no immediate emergency, you don't have to waive the rules and suspend the second readings, but perhaps consider this set for second reading at the next council meeting.
Accept ordinance eighteen oh-five and set the final reading and potential approval of the regularly scheduled August seventeenth meeting of the town council. Second the motion?
We have motion and a second. Are there any questions or discussion regarding this ordinance?
I guess my question would be, at the next reading, will we see details of the banks and offerings for the private refunding or refinancing? Or what would be the next step, Dustin?
At the seventeenth, you would say yes. Now, if you're more comfortable in saying, I as a council member will only say yes if that refinancing has these parameters, that is something that you could potentially do. Like, I don't want to see a refinancing that's less than five percent of the, the net savings, right? Or something along those lines. I would say the, to give us the most latitude, you would say you would adopt ordinance eighteen oh-five at your next scheduled meeting, but I can provide you whatever information you're most comfortable with.
Okay, no, it was really just a process check. So after eighteen oh-five is approved, then you'll go into the process of identifying the?
Then we're going to do serious conversations about which financial institution really wants this under what terms. It's kind of a cart horse thing, like we can't go too far down that road without having the authority to do that.
And the best guess now is two-hundred-and-forty-thousand savings minimum. Okay.
It's now is.
Thank you, clarified.
Any other questions? Do we have a motion and a second? But treasurer, Miss, can you please call a vote?
Councilor Schoon.
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Gardner.
Yes.
Councilor Tulowitzki.
Yes.
Councilor Kulturitis.
Yes.
Yes, and Council President Mellon.
Yes.
Yes. We have five to zero to read this. Have a second reading.
Thank you. That takes us to item C under new business, which is the Munster Tree Service bid. Is there anything you'd like to prep us here or?
No, no, I do, to be fair to Dave, I have had many conversations with him and to, to a conversation, he has been responsible and friendly. The complaints, not to quibble, I hate to air dirty laundry, were from residents about, not Dave, but people he's employed. But again, I want to reiterate that my interactions uniformly and unequivocally have been professional and pleasant with Dave.
Mr. Anderson, have we, the Pro Tree Service Company, they did not bid on the first project, it looks like. Where did, have they done other work in the area or where are they? They're from Volkina, it says here, is that correct?
They do most of their work primarily in Illinois. They don't have a reference in Indiana at the moment that I can call.
Have you checked references from them though?
I have, I know that Mr. Guntie has spoken with them and other customers, but I personally have not.
What has been the feedback from Mr. Guntie with regards to references?
I would have to sit down and get a detailed report. I would hate to speak for him, but he seemed optimistic about working with them and that they seemed responsive.
Well, yeah. Just, just looking at, you know, what was provided for us, one of the expectations is that the contractor has to be on a twenty-four hour call seven days a week. I think if the headquarters are in Volkina and there's no Indiana office, it presents a problem. It presents a problem and they have a higher bid. So I don't understand Mr. Guntie's.
Those are fair points.
Logic there and I think I will go against it.
Well, you wouldn't vote against it, you would vote.
First of all, Andy, do you have any comments?
You would vote for who you wanted.
I personally would prefer the business that's going back.
Say that I personally would prefer the business going back.
Yeah, we can't hear you, Counselor Coltritus.
Give our business to someone that lives in the state of Indiana, works in the state of Indiana and personally in the town myself. If they have a halfway decent bid, that was one of my questions the last time we took this up there. So the staff stated that they had issues in regards to not getting bills improperly. And from what the gentleman just said here, I mean, it just seems like the communication was just not on track. And I'm sure Wendy will stay on top of it and I'm sure Mr. Dave over there will be one happy to move along with that too. So those are my comments.
This is, this is a recommendation from staff, but it does not, the motion can be made to accept whichever.
Okay.
The motion is made how you choose.
How we spend the money now.
Right, so.
Did Mr. Westland have a comment? I saw you waving your hand.
Yeah, I was trying to figure out, I gotta, I'm using my laptop now and normally there's a raise hand function. I, for whatever reason, I can't find it. So I apologize, I was just physically raising my hand.
We can't see you anymore.
The, well thankfully Steve is virtual as well and he can see it. But so the statute talks about the lowest responsive and responsible bidder, right? So you gotta look at the lowest. That's number one. And then responsive talks about, did they respond correctly to the request? Okay, so for instance, when you put out for bid and they, you require certain documents, they don't send in a document. Well, then now it's not responsive. So you can go with the next highest one based on if that was the scenario. Obviously, that's not what happened here, but now you look at responsible. And so I guess I would say that if you're going to take somebody that's not the lowest, that you really need to have a record of why they are not responsible. So if there were complaints, we need that in the record to jump over the lowest and go to the next highest.
The next lowest.
Yes. Or then, yeah, the next lowest, I'm sorry. So, yeah, in this case, we only have, right, but.
Same thing, I mean.
Yeah, so, so I haven't heard yet why they are not responsible.
Yeah. Dustin, are you able to share anything about the nature of the complaints from residents?
Like I said, I like Dave and I've had a good experience with him. And I'd hate to go into individual complaints that I've received from residents about his crews. Because to his benefit, he mitigated each of those scenarios. But to be fair to me and to the town's time, it took many, many hours of talking many, of more than a few residents off the edge. And, you know, it's a judgment call, right? You could say all's well that ends well, and that's a perfectly reasonable way to look at it. You could say that when I have to spend a few hours with a resident, talking about how the town expends their funds and the responsiveness and who we hire. You know, again, maybe all's well that ends well. But I think that, A, uses my time, which you employ me to use in a less than strategic way. And B, if I can't convince that resident that we're doing everything we possibly can, the best way possible, it damages our credibility as a town and your credibility as elected official, which I take seriously and I try to protect.
Can I, I'm not disagreeing with the premise of what Dustin is saying. I'm just suggesting that you need more than ambiguous kind of big picture statements in the record if you're not going to give it to the lowest bidder. That's all I'm saying. So you would need concrete examples of what those problems were.
I would make a motion and by voice authorize acceptance of the bid from Dave's Tree Service or the Tree Service proposal. Yeah, I make that motion. I make a motion that we accept Dave's Tree Service bid for the, for the bid in front of us.
I will second that motion.
We have a motion in a second. Is there any further discussion or other questions?
I had heard, this is Steve, I'd heard Counselor Spoon mention he received some comments from residents regarding this matter. Is there something you'd like to share at this point, Ken? You think would be helpful?
Well, the, well, he didn't say to keep his name public or anything. It was from Jerry Roscoe, who was the head of maintenance for the park department. And worked with Dave's Tree Service over the years, many years. And so he complimented the service, saying that they did a great job. Those are his words, not mine. And that he was concerned that with the lowest bid, we would consider somebody with a higher bid and out of town. So it certainly raised questions in my mind.
Anything else, Steve?
No, I mean, just to weigh in, I suppose, as Attorney Westland has said, there's nothing really concrete that I've seen as of today or of which I'm aware to make a decision against the motion that's been made by Counselor Gardner. So absent any thing more concrete, I have nothing else to ask.
Anyone else? Treasure miss, can you please call for the vote?
I will. Counselor Spoon.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Gardner.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Tulowitzki.
Yes.
Counselor Coltritus.
Yes.
Council President Mellon.
Yes.
Yes, we have a five zero oh two award the contract to Dave's Tree Service.
That moves us to item D, ME Simpson Contract Renewal for the Fire Hydrant Flow Water Main Capacity Testing.
Yeah. So this is a very routine service that we need help with. Emmy Simpson has helped us with it over the years and we would ask that you allow us to continue to work with them.
I will make a motion to approve the Fire Hydrant Flow Water Main Capacity Testing Pricing Proposal from ME Simpson Company Incorporated for the Fire Hydrant Flow Flak Water Meter or Water Main Capacity Testing Program.
I second it.
Motion.
You're on a roll.
In a second, any questions or comments besides you are on a roll?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Gardner.
Yes.
Counselor Tulowitzki.
Yes.
Counselor Coltritus.
Yes.
And Council President Mellon.
Yes.
Yes, five to zero to our relationship with ME Simpson.
Thank you. It brings us to item E, All City Management Services Renewal Crossing Guards. This was, there was one comment from the public asking about, you know, where in this uncharted waters, we don't know, will actually stand still that we've, you know, so that we only pay for when we, when we actually need crossing guards. So we have that bit of information. If there's anything else you'd like to add, Dustin?
No, Chief Shekel?
No, just the note of the increase for this year. And although it's not specified in the contract, they gave us an email stating that next year would be the same rate, which is eighteen eighty-nine an hour. So we're looking, provided school starts on time, which looks unlikely, but we're looking at a total of one twenty-five eight oh seven for the twenty twenty twenty-one school year. That's about it.
Chief, if I could give a clarification, the town of Munster, was it in two thousand and fifteen where the town started taking care of the crossing guard, paying the crossing guards? Or was that even done before that?
It was done before that, but we had very few crossings. When they canceled the bus service, we ended up with something like seventeen crossings, which was approximately five times the number of crossings we normally covered. And there's no way we could do it with police personnel. So we went ahead and contracted with All City Management.
And have we, have we had any issues with All City Management over the years?
We've had a few issues with individual crossing guards, but they have addressed those issues satisfactorily.
And is this a competitive space? Are there a lot of companies that do this or is this?
Well, on recommendations, Mr. Tulowitzki, by council, a couple of years ago in twenty eighteen, they kept raising the rates every year. Council directed us to reach out to All City Management, tell them we weren't pleased with them raising the rates every year, which we did. They locked them in for the two years preceding that. However, it being a new school year, those two years of no price increases have gone away. And now their new rate is eighteen eighty-eighty-nine an hour, up from seventeen twenty-four an hour. That being said, there is another agency, although we just, back in twenty eighteen preliminarily looked into it, there is another crossing guard company like All City Management, but we don't have anything on them right now.
Okay.
Yes, I just want to, two thousand and fifteen is when the school town of Munster reduced their bus service and made walking to school or no bus service within a mile of the schools. Is that correct? That was two thousand and fifteen. So they added the cost savings to the school.
Okay.
Very good. Thank you.
I'd like the town manager of Harrison to sign up accordingly on behalf of town Munster. The twenty 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 twenty-one contract with All City Management Service in the amount of approximately one hundred and twenty-five thousand eight hundred and seven.
I second that motion.
We have a motion in a second. Any questions or further discussion?
Yeah, well, I guess the comment was made at the beginning of the meeting. And maybe just to verify as you're signing the, as you're signing this contract, if we go e-learning for the entire year, that also there's no costs throughout the year, or if there is some sort of minimum or retainer.
Correct, and if you wish, we can get that in email for you.
Okay.
Any others? All right, okay, so for treasure miss, can you please call for the vote?
Councilman Spoon.
Yes.
Councilman Gardner.
Yes.
Councilman Tulowitzki.
Yes.
Yes, Councilman Coltritus.
Yes.
Council President Mellon.
Yes.
We have a five zero to approve the All City Contract.
I'm going to bring one item that's not on new business, but pertains to the September seventh town council meeting is on Labor Day. So bring that up for discussion as far as if we want to put on Labor Day or if we want to reschedule for possibly Tuesday the eighth. We have done that in the past. It might be, you know, people aren't going far these days, but who knows? I mean, it's like, well, oh, yeah, you know, I don't know.
Wouldn't September eighth be the second Tuesday of the month? Would that be planning zoning?
Plan commission.
Oh, it's already the second, you're right.
I think moving it instead to the eighth to the fourteenth, which is still a Monday night. Most of us have Monday nights set aside for town stuff.
Does that?
I would propose that we change our, or move our September seventh meeting to September fourteenth.
I have one question that regarding, does that, is that problematic in any way from a budget or treasure standpoint? As, is that sometimes a large gap will cause an issue?
I will confirm that up in two weeks. I'll just make sure that the timing is good.
I also see Attorney Westland wanting to add something.
So September fourteenth would be an issue for my schedule because that's now the second Monday. I would ask that you consider August thirty-first, which is the fifth Monday in if that's possible.
We are going all week with that.
Is there a problem a week early? That is what.
That's what Mr. Westland is proposing for his, because with that being fifth Monday, then you don't, there's no conflict for him.
That's correct.
That also helps avoid a conflict with the school board meeting. Which is on the fourteenth, so that would be fine with me.
Oh, okay.
Would not conflict.
Correct.
I'm able to pull up the budget schedule and I think we're okay if we move it up to August.
Okay, okay, we can, we can, we don't need to do that through a motion, do we, or do we, David?
I'm sorry, I didn't hear that.
Do we need to do that through a motion or can we?
You should have somebody make a motion to change that date and obviously you've got to publicize it.
Okay.
So I will move to, move the September seventh meeting to August thirty-first instead in honor of the Labor Day holiday.
Lesson?
Second.
Second. And we will do roll call since we are not all present.
Councilman Spoon.
Yes.
Counselor Gardner.
Yes.
Tulowitzki.
Yes.
Counselor Coltritus.
Yes.
Council President Mellon.
Yes.
Yes, we have a five zero to move the meeting to August thirty-first.
Right, thank you very much. There are no reports, so that moves us to the portfolio reports. We can, it doesn't matter which order. Do you have anything, Ken?
Yes. The Streetscape Committee, the consultants will be in town tomorrow at the Community Market at Community Park. And they'll be there from three, I think, all the way to eight o'clock. And the purpose is to have people who are interested in the appearance and the health of Kynan Avenue and Ridge Road from their intersection to the, to the north and the west, to the west, to come and talk, find out what possibilities are, give their suggestions, say what they don't like, tell us what they do like, et cetera. So the staff will be there along with some of the committee members. And we invite everybody here and anybody listening to come to Community Park tomorrow. Support the Community Market at the same time.
Thank you, Ken. Councilor Department, do you have anything?
The only thing I'd like to report is that our fire department has received an upgraded score to a class three for the insurance service office. That type of rating increase going from four to three is a great accomplishment for our fire department. And we'd like to thank them and their administration for all their hard work. And over a period of time, that should save some of our businesses and our residents some money on their insurance claims. So we thank the fire department and the town administration for that.
Do we have to notify our insurance companies or? What's the next step? Insurance companies aren't going to just pay attention to this without being nudged, I would think.
They do.
They do?
Mission accomplished.
Great.
Good news, thank you.
No other comments.
Thank you, Counselor Gardner. Counselor, okay, Counselor Tulowitzki, do you have anything to report?
Yeah, since the last meeting, the school board has held a working session and a special meeting of the school board. It was, it was highly attended at the Munster Auditorium. I didn't set my timer, but I think most people spent. I didn't set my timer, but I think most people spent two to three hours there, um, getting to watch the school board deliberate through this difficult decision. Um, and there was a long period where everyone who wanted to share thoughts, uh, were allowed to come up to the mic and speak openly, so I found it to be, uh, an informative and respectful approach. Of course, this is a highly fluid situation, so, um, keep your ears posted of, of what will, what will happen. But I just wanted to say that that was, uh, that was a well-attended and well-orchestrated event from the school board.
Thank you. For Treasure Miss?
We have very exciting census reports. I know you've all been missing it. I know. Nationally, um, the response rate is sixty-two point nine percent. Indiana is sixty-seven point two percent. The town of Munster, we have sadly dropped from number seven to number eight. We've had no, no new completions, so we are at eighty-two point one percent. And then so July thirtieth, there was a soft launch of census takers going door to door in non-responding households, and Lake County is one of those locations. So you may, if you have not yet completed your census form, you may have someone knocking at your door. And I just encourage everyone, it's money in our pocket, so please complete your census.
For Treasure Miss, I did see a census taker in my neighborhood today.
Oh, I saw it.
I was in a hurry, and I was going someplace, I didn't stop to talk to him, but I did see someone with a big census sign and a packet of information it looked like, so.
Very good.
I did see somebody walking around like that.
So here's hoping our number will go up.
When you say we're number eight, is that in the county or the state?
State, in the state.
It is in the state.
In the state, yes. So St. John is number one, I believe, um, off the top of my head. Dyer is four, five, or six, right?
Yeah, they've been up there. But to have three, uh, that, that high in the state, they, somebody wrote, or talked to me and said, that's gotta be county. I'm glad to hear that.
No, it's, it's the whole state, and then, um, countywide, we are, of course, toward the top. But it's, it's quite a few municipalities in Lake County are toward the bottom. So they're really trying to find, get more, Lake County council is trying to-
Communities, uh, many with housing that's empty, so we're not gonna find anybody there, we're looking at least.
Well, Lake County Council has an initiative, and I don't know the details of it. I do know that they passed an initiative to engage the county as a whole better, to get all in county represented properly. Great, that's it for me.
All right, thank you, and I don't have, uh, any reports, so I just say I would echo everyone up here. So please, please, please fill out the census if you are not, because it is very important to the town, the school town, as far as residents are concerned, extremely important. So with that, uh, the announcements are that all town council meetings will begin at seven PM, unless otherwise noted. Uh, we do not have a meeting on August tenth. We do have a meeting along with the redevelopment commission meeting, both on August seventeenth and August thirty-first. And September, or so September seventh and September fourteenth, we do not have meetings, and that brings us to adjournment.
So moved.
Second.
Motion in a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It is seven fifty-five, and we are adjourned.
Sometime Wendy, when you ask, when we do a roll call, a call vote, I'm in, I'm first, word one. I'm gonna say aye instead of yes, and see what happens.
Throw me off.
We're gonna worry yes all the time until we adjourn, and then you say reason or end, when we adjourn, we all say aye.
Seven fifty-five.
Do you want us, would you like to share your information now with the resident, or would you want us?
We could just run through the redevelopment.
This is very, this is very quick. There's nothing on good agendas, so, uh, if you bear with us. So it is seven fifty-six, and I will call to order the redevelopment commission regular meeting for August third, twenty twenty. And for Treasure Miss, have you noted the attendance?
I have, we should formally, Commissioner Schoon?
Present.
Yes, he's present. Commissioner Gardner?
Present. Present.
Commissioner Tulowitzki?
Aye, present.
Present, Commissioner Coulteritis?
Present.
Commissioner Mellon?
Present.
And also noted John Castro is available, um, virtual, okay.
Thank you.
Hey, John.
Hello.
So does anyone wish to speak, uh, to the redevelopment commission this time? If no one from the public is here in person, did you have any, nothing sent in to you? Okay, that will, uh, I will close the public comment section of the meeting and move to the consent agenda.
I'm moving, uh, consent agenda.
I second that motion.
We have a motion and a second. For Treasure Miss, can you please call the vote?
Commissioner Schoon?
Yes.
Commissioner Gardner?
Yes.
Commissioner Tulowitzki?
Yes.
Yes, Commissioner Coulteritis?
Yes.
Commissioner Mellon?
Yes.
Five to zero to approve the consent agenda.
Thank you. We have no, uh, old or new business reports or announcements, except, I take that back. I wanted to announce, um, that the meeting that was scheduled for September seventh, it will, it has been moved to August thirty-first, will also affect the redevelopment commission meeting. So please note that, um, for this as well, and that brings us to adjourn.
I move you adjourn, second.
A motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Close. Okay, we are adjourned at seven fifty, seven, eight.
Got it, thank you.
My, President Mellon, I had intended-